A call to order.
A roll call. Helsom over Campbell.
Here.
McCorkle.
Here.
Merritt.
Here.
Mayor Jernigan.
Here.
Pope.
Here.
Bell.
Here.
And Longbreak.
Mayor.
Thank you.
Please stand for the flag of allegiance.
It is to the United States of America and to the Republic of America's citizens, one nation under God, in the universal, universal, universal.
May you, Lord, for our civil servants, thanking for their hard work and sacrifice, may you continually bless them, may you generously give to each of them wise and discerning hearts to still further govern the people of the next city. In the mayors, the believers, staff, the city council, bishops, so they may solve problems, the statements between right and wrong, bring order to building and prosperity to our community. I'll be attending. I'll be watching. Also. I'm sorry. For vote for the president.
Could you clarify who first?
Ellen did first, and then Jermaine did second.
Okay, okay, thank you. Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Merritt?
Yeah.
Mayor Jernigan?
Yes.
Councilmember Pope?
Yes.
Councilmember Bell?
Yes.
And Councilmember Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
And Jackson, tonight we have in our audience Tim Terrell, prior counsel person, and Seth Long, your prior counsel person. Thank you for that.
We have, this is David.
Oh, Mr. New, sorry. Oh. Prior counsel. As a courtesy to those, oh, city attorney parliamentary procedures.
Yes, according to the rules of procedure that have been adopted by the city council, the mayor or presiding officer is responsible for the maintenance of order and decorum at all times. No person should be allowed to speak who has not first been recognized by the chair. All questions and remarks should be addressed to the chair. A council member once recognized shall not be interrupted while speaking unless called to order by the presiding officer. No member shall be allowed to speak more than once upon any one subject until every other member choosing to speak thereon shall have spoken. And as a reminder, public members attending council meetings shall observe the same rules of order and decorum applicable to the council, and the council has adopted a three-minute time limit for public comment.
Thank you. As a courtesy to those in attendance, we would ask that cell phones be turned off or set aside. Public appearance, persons wishing to address the NPUA City Council on subjects other than those scheduled are requested to do so at this time. When called by the mayor, please announce your name, address for the record. In order to conduct a timely meeting, a three-minute time limit per person has been established by municipal code section 2-18. An amendment to the California Government Code, section 549, 500, prohibits the city council from taking action on specific item until it appears on the agenda.
Amy first.
Amy first, sorry.
Okay.
Thank you. Hey, Robert E. Zero Two Nine So, here in Needles. Once again, since I'm here. Governor, Mayor, City Councilors, I am here to. I invite you to join us on Thursday, October 10th, at 10:00 a.m. It's for 10:10 flag raising ceremony at the City County Conference. This started 15 years ago, but my father waited here and will be the first flag raising for the city of Needles. National Day, the Republic of China, also referred to as Double Ten, or Double Ten Day, is the Independence Day for the Republic of China. You can remember the start of the Wing Chen uprising in October 10th, 1911. And they ended with the Qing Dynasty. Ending the Qing Dynasty, China was established, the Chinese Republic, the public, the formerly established Gang War First, 1912. During the course of the Civil War, government of Republic of China lost control of the mainland and fled to Taiwan, December, 1949. National Day now celebrated, ROC controlled Taiwan, but also celebrated here. The city of Needles supported and members of the city council has grown from the gathering of people of over 100, all over California, Nevada, Arizona, that's in Taiwan. This year, Teresa Chu has been our MC, about to be talking this, this year, as she did with the beginning spoke even, with the PSMC, which is the Taiwan Semi-Manufacturing Company. Mr. Lee will be taking his place this year. I would especially like to thank the Republic of China, China wants to end this chapter, Air Force Veterans Association for their work and dedication and need support. They also give an endorsement to the Little Saisco Band. I hope to see them, see them there along with many people who would like to join us this year.
Thank you. Amy.
Hey, there's a few more victories. I just got to come back and talk. Like we're in, did, got something. And the way people drive out, it's bad. Personally, I like the city. You know. Also speedboats, like you ever been down to the gas, who was all the down there and got those speedboats, they can't ride bicycles out there because it's pretty scary. And about a week or so of that, I was there, and I opened a normal truck and somebody went about next, when people were finding. I, you know, I don't know, I just, I was ready to say something, but you know, yell at it, whatever, but anyways. It's, it's, it's a bad spot. I don't open any divorce cases, probably. I just wanted to bring it up. That's all, just, thank you very much.
Thank you.
You bet.
Anyone else? If not, public comment will be closed. To Campbell's side. You. Ellen. Yes.
This director, going out to the mayor, there.
Music, like bands, sorry, I'm going to call this.
Oh, it's really good, this guy, speaking like. Thank you. Um, I'm the mayor, you're to base state city county laws, is this true? Which is where? As mayor, you're to obey all its laws. According to the state records, the Needle Tourism Visitor Center, Needle's Prodeo are being pumped. As of 9/10/24, that was today, for act by the state, that was still standing, the state showed that it is still being pumped. Since you're a mayor, how can you allow these businesses to run as occurring by the law and the law and the law? Your condition that is listed as delinquent is not in good standing and is prohibited through leniency and conduct. For which registration required, including soliciting, fines, distributing, charitable funds. I ask the council to address this.
Could you state your name and address?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, it's Nancy Greenwood, 1912, DeSoto, Needles, I just live, last week, it's great, everybody.
Anyone else? If not, public comment is closed, thank you. Presentation, a 10-minute time limit per presentation has been established per municipal code section 2-18. Presentation by Erin Fox, disaster program manager for the American Drive Fox, San Diego Chapter, this will be continued till October, where, in the, with the fire stuff in San Diego, had to be posted. Presentation by Stephanie S. Beckhards, advocate for Arizona and Nevada, housing coordinator, program facilitator for West Care, Arizona.
Yes, Madam Mayor, members of the council, as a result of the last city council meeting, there were concerns expressed by the council regarding domestic violence being prevalent with the recent reports that have been brought to light by the partners of the Sheriff's Department advisory messages. And so we go ahead and be proactive and reach out to West Care so that we can get them in front of us today to help understand the options, the residents of Needles, to utilize, only, I will, take the presentation, very good. Articulate the various resources that are available, the city shows, in addition to our resource card, that we provide for town has domestic violence, this is all there, share members of the community, let that, I want to introduce Stephanie, we just did West Care. And thank you so much for joining me today, for so being able to show some interest in our team.
Thank you, guys, for having us. This is the vice president, Sharon Bach, she's five office, class break, and I've been introducing housing and domestic violence. Years ago, I used to come here and do a care group at Julie's Place Apartments, and that's what we did in town, so it's been on for several years, and I know, I asked, have your domestic violence rate within the county or here in Needles, it's up 37% since I beat January, which is relatively high level rate. But in Bullhead, we offer domestic violence groups to both the victim and the subject, plus, there are those first classes that are all for a foreigner, for the parents, we also do, we have a safe house shelter for women, need to, or for safety school and children, and several other options, it starts with housing, regular subs, which they choose only, we do array of names in our office, or just diving within them, from almost 10 to 12, but. If I need to create a home aid, I'm required, that has all the services that we have, and I have to try to, I have hardly a lot of, several nights, I was bringing services here, especially the needle center for treatment town, and, and we looked into it, and we tried really hard, from the county that you get in. I tried, and I tried, and I tried, and I tried, and I just kept getting shut down. We have a lot of services, we get a lot of your clientele now, we're doing a lot of DIYs up there, we're doing a lot of domestic violence, one of the things that came brought to the area up there that might help down here is an advocate, which Stephanie is, Stephanie's on call 24/7, and she goes out and refers for slanders, it has evolved, which has evolved, and you, I know, I'm talking to House you guys, because Ted is like, anyway, it's evolved, where we work with child protective services, we work with all kinds of people, our safe house is 24/7. We, I think the fund number is on there, on the campus, we do both of our bars, we feel pretty good to be shut off, because we will figure it out, that's kind of what we do, if we want to help, if we want to be down here, that's the county aggressive department to cooperate a whole lot, and your roles are a whole other thing, I'll point it, and they are at the phone house. Currently, we do, we assess Medicaid, a lot of people friend there, there's a ton of services, we, they do have Arizona Medicaid, but we don't turn anybody away. For GYs, early charging, 25 dollars essentially, hardly anything, they get screened, and I always tell them, front desk is long, and your judges will accept what we have to offer, which is people, so we're doing our job to go back after you on all different levels. I noticed in Phoenix, Alabama, that the courts went out for an advocate, and that's, Stephanie and I talked about it, it's grant season, different grants are coming out, and I'm willing to write in and advocate for an area. Which, what does that mean? That means under domestic violence, you would have somebody close by to, which Stephanie does, and she works, Maclennan and Bullhead City, at times down here, right? They're following down here a lot, so. Um, where the only shelters, along the Colorado River, the other one is in Cayman, I mean, we were for a long time, many years, we had first life services down here. And the grant funding changed, it was funded by the cigarette tax, tobacco taxes, and that changed, and so, close our office down here, we probably stayed down here for a long time. Ellen and I worked really hard on trying to figure out who owns the building and all of that when they were first leaving, I actually have two people that were at Needles that have changed that now, but it's. So, anyway. I'm prepared to, let me, I'm prepared in this shelter, we help them with employment, we help them with, we get donations for boats, we get donations for food, help them with housing. In addition to our substance abuse, or mental health, or domestic violence, we have apartments, and we help veterans, and we help domestic violence victims, and it's like a two-bedroom apartment, with all electricity, it's $1,000. So it's affordable for them, such as the space world, so we try to keep the cost low so they can afford it, we help get their fitness, daycare, we buy them pretty much everything, they're getting parts, we see theater and families.
I just need to elaborate the advocacy, I don't know how many guys have on duty on a typical day or night, I know in Bullhead, it's usually 6:00 to 9:00, and Maclennan had four, maybe five, with one sergeant, so if you've got more than one or two calls, as they'll probably attest to, if there's a D E victim, they've got suspect in jail, a woman needs help, or children, however, maybe, they're your advocate that comes in and assists those guys to get back on the next call, to get back up there, however, maybe. And I believe in this almost nine years, and it's been truly on them too, to, you know, for those, I said, other pride and progress or something, it brings them up, yeah, it's not the victim, I'll read the report, I'll give it to you, you know, done, it's in court, TOS, order released, we need that, so, so it'll be everything, so, the violence, the signs, the protest.
We currently have BAG, BAG Act, O B W, E D S, so, so we have all the different brands, they're just non-alignment, some, we have six people that are charged children, one of the only ones. One of the only ones that caused a crisis, they can call 24/7, and somebody's there to answer the phone. All the other shelters, like one in Cayman, another one, they no longer, they no longer have somebody that answers the phone, so, so, there's only one, and I'm saying various death, well. So I refer to, to, I mean, got her cards, got her home address, more, but use those numbers and call, if you guys didn't call, it's, if somebody is in trouble, like, like, got the calls, I always give it to my staff, and other people, that, we get the calls, and we'll figure it out, I know how that would be going to happen.
A question. Can, potentially, this is a couple of best, period, the, the situation is getting worse, 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 but they haven't had the money, they must keep out. Can they go?
How proactive, how, so, so why they got me to find, so there's a natural happening, there's a person will go back nine times before they need for it, and so. We're not always successful, but planted that seed, they know somebody's out there to help them, and we did, listen, that, you got a call from this doctor, that, that, that she would release, or, right, let me say, but she said up to where the person, whatever they had to do, they have an appointment, she parts around back, officers assistance, they got her out of there, we got her there, so you do those people all the time, to wherever their families are, to be part of funding, that's allowed for that, so, yeah, somebody is, that's, that's 24/7, I mean, sometimes people call, and the perpetrator is in shock. They just need somebody, they just need to hear a friendly voice, they just need to know that there is good safety out there, and that's what we're there for, they just need to, you know, Sasha, Bonnie, that was, Stephanie and I went out, she will be first, maybe for like a week, get to the small children, he was self-employed, and he went out to take the tire, there for the, he did. He was the quickest, half my car, get out of there, he never wanted to take our thing, I mean, those are ideal, get someone that's on that verge before any physical activity or any actual harm, or, you know, all those things, I mean, the National, it's about 50 hours, so, it doesn't, you work with them for a couple of weeks, it's encouraging, encourage them, give them that safe feeling, that comfort, where they'll finally, though I could be, there's other people like me, I can do this, I have before I have, whether it's financial or the mental, so, whatever, kids, that whole thing, so that's ideally the best way to get them before a homicide, or just, but, yes. Women don't want to bring in their families. They want to keep their families together. They'll just. So tell them that. It orders either the families together, and when they realize there's a pretty big voice on the other end of the pond. And that's a young county, they can't move on to the bottom of the serving. Whereas we can move them six, five. Guys else, six, ten to four. I mean, there are options, but sometimes it gets stuck and they don't see those options. But then we have residential treatments that we can help them, they find different ways to help. There's all kinds of different things that we offer to help. Well, it's just a phone call.
If you were to, I was gonna say thank you guys over here, once you get through. And we love Chad and love us here. And you guys have a great program.
I saw my dear.
Thank you. We use you. Feed out for Chad, just having great.
They make your. They make your. Now, I can take you back on that, I know why you're fifteen minutes. I really appreciate it.
Thank you so much. I also want to say you and I. Speaking of things that are about to happen, especially since the center changed, because you have to be lying with a patient or. Fine, having those plans. You've got, I think they're coming together. Because we have their supply.
Maybe it's a target where we need to target the amazing thing that you can send California residents into air exam. And they're going to accept all of our credentials, but coming here and offering. Since their credentials are. Not as difficult as. You have a giant people on your side.
Promise pertaining to the council file is three-minute time limit per person has been established. Public hearings. Public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for against approval of city council ordinance number 667-ac. Adopting the California Building Standards Code 2022. Residency ordinance number 635-ac. Adopting the California Building Standards Code 2019 edition. Amending the universal code article. Four. Unipart administrative code in chapter two administration section two. Adopted by reference were filed and amending sections of chapter six building. City manager.
Yes, and mayor members of the council, look at that. Every three years, state adopts a new building code. Uh, last time it was adopted was in 2019. The state mandates that all cities and counties adopt, even personally, let's come single check. So as you can see, the date of the building code is 2022. So it's not that the city hasn't been effectively enforcing that code, it's just we haven't done the paperwork catch up. Uh, we, as you are aware, we have transitioned with our building official. Uh, and now we've got, uh, Mr. Williams, who's made himself spearheading this along with Ted Rush. Hit this across the finish line. So really, given the name, this paperwork, our firm, folks, contractors, developers are currently already submitting. Under the 2022 building code, this is just paperwork for us to move this across the line. Uh, some of the highlights, it moves a building permit from 180s, 12 months. That's helped reduce some of the infrastructure fees, takes time to extend the permit or have our permit tech be able to do that work. And so again, uh, the biggest challenge was going from the 2012 to the 2019. There were some growing pains there. Obviously, there's more than three years in that equation. So luckily, this time, though, we've got our most competitive and informed. Where, of where we're heading with this. So our recommended action is to take this approval of adopting, uh, what the mayor of the state, the mayor of California building code standard to the 2022. I also want to add, it also rescinds the current, uh, property maintenance code. Usually, uh, currently, we use a property maintenance code that dates back to 2012. Again, all the light that you see around the community, uh, the property maintenance code is a tool that we have to be able to. Clear the light that occurs. What I mean by that is a vacant house that's been sitting there for years, has been taken care of, owner during vegetation. Uh, the house, you know, windows are taken out, uh, its vagrants are living inside of it. So this gives our 24/4 tools as well to be able to utilize this code to keep our. I've also got the building inspector here and the development director here to handle questions. But with that, our recommendation is to approve this 667. Adopting the current codes that we're competing for by 2012.
Questions by, uh, council?
I have a question. We can't change the interstate California laws, right? We did this back in the time trying to fire. Tricklers. Right, just under the area.
So once we adopt these, we commit amendments that make sense, but they can't go against the law. For example, we'd love to get rid of the spring. So we'd love to get rid of the spring from the air. That's a, it's a California regulation that really adds an additional $20,000 to every fault. Uh, which, uh, again, we've not sized that. In the event where we worked with the county to alleviate the size requirements, I adopt the state code for the 20,000 square. Requirements for non-occupancy type buildings, we're able to work around. We will continue to advocate this to provide ways to ensure that we can. In areas where we can, in some. Forgiveness, we will go back out. But step one is to get one.
Will open for public comments, are any public comments regarding this measure? If not, public comment will be closed. Uh, council discussion. If not, call for the motion.
Uh, council member Campbell?
Yes.
Council member McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Council member Pogue?
Yes.
Council member Belt?
Yes.
And council member Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for against adopting an amended appendix. To the conflict of interest code pursuant to the political reform act of 1974 has been continued to October 8, 2024. Public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for against approval of city council resolution number 2024-37. Amendment resolution 2023-41. And adopting a new fee structure at the Rivers Edge Golf Course. City manager report.
Yes, that mayor members of the council, in front of you, we have a resolution that would increase the fees of the golf courses. Yes. You're that right, we need to increase. At the end of the day, the city has made significant strides to improving the quality of the golf courses. That's one of the tremendous job. I not only have the game, the cut costs, the state, which we'll see later by half, uh, later in this agenda. But at the end of the day, the city itself has put in $750,000 below with the grant to rehabilitate our sprinklers clearly. So at the end of the day, we start adding value to a house in 3,000. And so we still value ourselves as the one market of all. If you look at the 378 dollar system, it's pretty exciting, uh, touchstone, you can see that we still are very competitive. Still are, uh, ensuring that we are not the most expensive, uh, golf course around. At the end of the day, I think we're the best golf course around, but I'm a little biased. Uh, and so we have in front of you today is a proposal to increase the rate by $3. For instance, around 18 volts, it rides from 39 to 42, and then if you lock it's 26 to 29. Again, these are very competitive rates. So I've also got JJ Delgato here, if you'd like to get any questions for us. But at the end of the day, it's projected to increase value without $40,000. As you are aware, this is an amenity that serves those not only here in deals, but through interreaching. So we, uh, with that, our recommendation is to adopt, amend the D structure, the Rivers Edge Golf Course to include a $3 increase. And again, we did this last year for the lengthy membership rates. We were able to get closer with that, we now will just go across the phone for the rest of the.
Um, council questions and staff?
When will this be open, I've heard that October 1st?
Well, currently, that is asking. So currently, we're actually closed for open voters, so we will open up October 4th. And so the raise will be in effect, technically, it goes into effect if the creates that's fine. But you'll also play involved for another, uh, couple of weeks, unfortunately. But, uh, while you did, if you answer the question, it's going to be ongoing for.
Yes.
What's the price difference between us and, you know, right now? And I'm saying, oh yeah, that's for, uh, we'll golf first, we'll be hard, and we break or off office.
Yeah, I think that new mayor, uh, council of Deja Dayl, uh, golf pro, I'm not sure if you've heard of all. Who they have been taking, the reserves following this. Um, I would, did they get that marketing analysis? So. Here's a better mission over here. So we were about 20% cheaper than them. I'm just trying to bridge that gap. The three main reasons that you mentioned was the improved turf condition, so my team is going to be really hard. Are and will continue to, the golf course, uh, this marketing analysis, we are so much cheaper than everyone else. And, uh, we're just trying to bridge that gap, so we're certainly out here. Uh, and our last year, we increased $3, 36, 39. I would look at the more right at once, I just want to go, go look at it, and I'm not the scary golfers on. Um, but we are the municipality area, we're always going to be the dealer area, but that being said, I'm trying to bridge this gap because we offer a very good amount of.
Did you get a lot of, uh? Be bad, distract anybody?
Very animal, that's a very animal. There's always going to be a couple, you know, doing a couple of, you know, it is, but, uh, when I explain the why, uh, basically understand. So.
We're still a cheap, a south city now, so.
Yeah, yeah, we always have been dealing down, so I'm here to stand that. But, uh, we want to project that, like I said, because we offer a big amount of.
Yeah.
Our, uh, our golf course is beautiful. It is absolutely gorgeous. Well, great job, so grateful. I remember my man is out there playing golf, always good to see the tornado. And we have classes with golfers and we great friends out here and buddy. Uh, and our golf course is on the grid. The other golf course is, you know, we don't know how long we're there. We are, so we offer something that they know. For those, um, and it is, I play golf all the time. And our golf course is really inexpensive, so if you are a golfers, you know darn well, well, this is a great deal. No matter how you slice it, it's like over what El Rio has been sealed, it would be a good deal. We don't want to go that far, but we're good. If we did, it still would be a good deal because anywhere else.
Right, if I ever step aside with my manager at that, and think in my mind of a golfer. Um, just saying this area is competitive, if you understand, there's a lot of golf courses, not a lot to compare to. So honestly, yeah, we have this, we're just, you know, this area offers doubles, uh, for about six months out of the year. But it's competitive. And when thinking about the golfer, why would they choose us for his edge, right? Is because get out of the product, get out of the staff, let's prepare the staff, which we do have. Um, and it's in my mind, the word is getting out that this, this force is coming back. It's, I'm not naming names, I'm not trying to, you know, have judgment, but it was a very face for a long time. And by goal is to bring back where it once was, it was quality product, it offered a great price, and everyone would have been for it. Everyone would have afforded, first of all, this golf can be expensive, it's very expensive. And my, my job is to offer their product, we still got a lot of businesses.
Okay. Thank you.
And we should be wrapping up phase one of this irrigation project in a couple of weeks. We have water now, the pump that delivered it, as of yesterday, which is very exciting to complete, and I'm sad. So, uh, I'm excited, I'll be ready for the fall, ready for cooler weather, ready for our school team.
Any other questions concerned? Not, um, it's open for us public comment, any public comment regarding the golf course? If not, a public comment is closed. Uh, call for the, uh, motion to approve.
A second.
Okay. Council member. Council member Campbell?
Yes.
Council member McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Council member Pogue?
Yes.
Council member Belt?
Yes.
And council member Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Public hearing notice to consider all evidence and testimony for or against approval of the resolution number 2024-39. Of city council of the city of Needles, California, approving the measure one, five-year local. Street capital improvement for fiscal years 2024, 2025, 2028, and 2029. Staff.
Yes, madam mayor, members of the council, in front of you, we need to program how to utilize or measure high five local dollars for the next five years. Obviously, the goal of the council, uh, is very clear, we want to put every additional extra dollar towards our residential streets. So obviously, that's what you have for today. So I need every last dollar that we will get from the state towards, uh, our roads. We'll go towards our favorite avenue program that includes four meeting, which is the next set of roads, and then five. And so we're excited to be able to put that in front of you. Again, uh, they require us to have a public hearing, so everybody's on board, so everybody's aware. So we want to scream from the rooftops, we want to put this money towards our residential, uh, roads, and this is how we hit there. This is one way to do it. So our recommended action is to approve this by your phone for the, uh, measure high funds.
Questions? Um, this will be open for a public comment regarding our measure highs for our road improvement. No, um, public comment will be closed. Call for the motion?
A second.
Call for the vote.
Council member Campbell?
Yes.
Council member McCorkle?
Yes.
Vice mayor Merritt?
Yes.
Council member Pogue?
Yes.
Council member Belt?
Yes.
And council member Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
MPUA, reset the city council meeting and convene a joint council if MPUA need. All matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be impacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor or any member of the MPUA city council, they pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to MPUA council action, the member of the public may address the MPUA city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items seven through eight on the consent calendar by affirmative grown offer.
Girl, I'm like 417 and 24. So what are we on at seven and eight? Oh, it's that, um, that's, sorry. That's a nice one. Okay.
I'm going to through, uh, second, second calendar, um. I just said seven and eight?
Oh, second.
Call for the vote.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member McCorkle?
Yeah.
Member Merritt?
Yes.
Member Jernigan?
Yes.
Member Pogue?
Yes.
Member Belt?
Yes.
And member Longbreak?
Yes.
End of the MPUA consent calendar, regular MPUA council items. Approve the 2.8% hospital living volume increase in water and wastewater basic service rates effective October 1st, 2024. City manager.
Yes, thank you, mayor. So we're going to come through in the next two weekends. Uh, the 2024 cost of living adjustment, we're to water based on our electric blind, and one doesn't reach me under the break in time. Uh, next slide. So here tonight, we have the cost of living adjustment, as you are, where we provide water, wastewater, and electric service. Um, our, uh, have about 1,900 servicing hats that span over, you know, 700 square miles. Um, here's a little breakdown, the four public utilities advise the city council and the MPUA on matters of budget, purchasing, and improvements. Uh, before you tonight did have, and this presentation approved, uh, the motions that you are about to hear. Next slide. So how are rates determined? We commit rates through the revenue requirements that we do a rate study. The last rate study was adopted in 2020. It was a five-year rate study. The whole adjustments that we have tonight is the final of the five-year recommendations. Uh, we are currently out committed for a rate study, um, which, uh, will set the recommendation going forward. Next slide. Under California Proposition 218, there's a lot here, but what we would like to highlight is as a publicly owned utility, which is what the MPUA is. We cannot collect revenue beyond what it's necessary for us to provide the service. So it's really important when we're designing rates or proposing, uh, cost of service adjustments, that they are only what we need to provide the residents with the service and nothing beyond. Next slide. Our goals are very simple, we want to be affordable, reliable is a big one, that we've been striving really hard to improve for our residents. And we want to be transparent in keeping our residents informed of what the rates are and any changes that may occur. Um, adopted in 2020 with the rates is included in what they be called a cost of living adjustment. Here, right here is the actual verbiage that's out of the rates that were adopted by city council. Um, we just want to highlight here that a cost of living adjustment is applied October 1st of every year. It is based on the consumer pricing index, uh, that's published by the U.S. Bureau of Labor Statistics, based on the June value. And then it's compared to that for the last twelve month of actual, um, it sits plus the CPI, whichever is lower. Um, it's really important to know that never in these circumstances can any CPI increase 16%. Here tonight, we have the U.S. Labor Statistics. We do want to point out that, uh, the current, um, cost of living adjustment came in at 2.8%. Which we do want to highlight that this is the lowest, the actual lowest, and you'll see here on this chart, we hit over 8%. Um, with inflation that we've seen since 2020. Um, so the June value again was 2.8%, so. Here, when, um, we're going to go into the water service cost of living adjustment. And here, we just want to highlight, you know, what we provide, we provide over 66 miles of distribution pipe that we're, uh, providing. We treat over about 1.6 million gallons of water. And then we provide, all the water that we provide to our residents, we follow federal, state, health, and safety standards. Next slide. Here tonight, in front of you is the proposed, um, rate structure. On the left is the current rates that were adopted in November 1st, 2023. And to the right is what is being proposed tonight. We'll go into detail a little bit more about how this impacts. For wastewater, um, we have over, we have four substations, we have over 390 mandals that, uh, we maintain. And then we have a very significant, uh, treatment plant that we also maintain. Here's the proposed COLA, this, excuse me, this is the current, uh, wastewater rates that were adopted November 1st, 2023. And we'll go into detail a bit more here. Next slide. And here is the proposed, uh, uh, rates for the residents. I do want to highlight here, the EDU, um, if you go back on this slide again, is currently $51 recording on 6, it's going to 5280. Next slide, I will place. So what are the changes that you will see on your water bill or on your bills? Next slide. Here for the typical single family, we base this on 10 cubic feet, which is what we see in multifamily use. And one EDU for wastewater, for water, the net impact is an increase of $3.83. For wastewater, it's an increase of a dollar for each floor. So the net impact to the resident is an increase of $5.27. Again, it's based on the 2.8% COLA that was, that we presented. Next slide. For electric, we have over sub, four substations, 30 miles of transmission, and over 20 miles of distribution. Um, it's like, the proposed COLA for wastewater, uh, on the left, you'll see the current rates. Um, and on the right, you'll see the proposed increase rates. The basic service charge is increasing from $35 to 23, or $35.23, essentially, to $36.22. Um, slide, we're going to detail a bit, I'll suggest. So here we have, we want to discuss to you our power cost adjustment. We have, uh, power adjustment account that was established by the board that we utilized to offset power purchasing. Um, in August of 23, that account was negative of $1.4 million. So we enacted a 0.01 PCA that was on top of the per race to help decrease that fine balance. As of, uh, July 24, that, um, account was positive 622,000. We buy our term purchases in quarters, um, and we do go out, um, very far, not too far, because you have some market risk by doing that. But we are purchased all the way through December of 23. So tonight, uh, we are requesting that we remove that PCA of 0.01. And then we'll go back to the slide to show you that our overall hydro, we're also recommending that we decrease from 0.1638 to 0.1428. So it's over a two cent, uh, reduction that we have for you tonight. Next slide. We want to give a breakdown of power over hydro rate is, um, beta. We have two components, we have what we call the non-power component, and then we have the power component. Our rates of the 14 cents that we're proposing tonight, uh, 10 cents of that is strictly made up of power purchasing costs. Um, and then the renewable offset, uh, power purchasing that we have seen unfortunately. Uh, the power purchase is 47% and our renewable energy offset is about 16%. The other, um, non-powerly component is the reinforcements of our rate, which is the O and M, debt, capital improvement, and reserves. Um, next slide. We do want to highlight tonight that we made significant infrastructure improvements to the water, um, system. Uh, over $16 million, which as a result will not impact any rate pairs or in this calculation of us. And you need to collide that reserve and for that capital. So, so those are significant improves that we made that will not impact any rates, which as a result, rates will continue to go down. Or only increased by the, the COLA adjustment annually, which is what we need to be able to provide. Or only increased by the, the COLA adjustment annually, which is what we need to be able to provide. So we want to highlight combined, how will this impact your bill? So based on what we provided earlier, the water will be increased of three dollars and eighty-three cents, the wastewater increase of a dollar forty-four. Electric, with us proposing tonight to remove that one-cent PCA and decrease the over hydro rate, we are saving the customer over thirty dollars. Uh, for example, and again, this is just estimated based on a little over two-thousand kilowatts of that could fluctuate, um, based on your action. So tonight, the, the recommended, recommendations that we are proposing are a net decrease to the customer of about twenty-four dollars. So with that, uh, maybe having answered any questions that you may have. Parting the, we call no objection for twenty-two.
Council have any questions?
I want to just bring up that you have had a three, uh, temperature, you know, um, little slideshow on it. Um, typically, there's at least three rates higher than it was last year. That's why your everybody's electric bill is higher. Here, which means it's a little harder, um, that our rates have changed through the summer. It's just because there are two, uh, those who are harder. This being said, it will lower your rate, but if you're still running for, I already still have this other, what makes something, because it's a program. The actual, not the compound that you're using, it's still going to keep it up. Just so we clear that part of that, it has nothing to do with the change in. It's just that, unfortunately. We find there.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Belt. Uh, we did see, uh, a straight to point out, uh, when we compared July to June, it's all residential demand was increased about twenty percent. And there was no changes to rates coming the last rate adjustment with the PCA was done in November.
If not, this is open for public comment regarding, um, our, um, whole increase in the wire, uh, wastewater basic service. If not, public comment will be closed. If call for the motion?
I can.
Call for the vote.
Member, councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Member, councilmember McCorkle?
Yeah.
Member Vice Mayor Barrett?
Yeah.
Member Mayor Jernigan?
Yes.
Member, councilmember Poe?
Yes.
Member, councilmember Belt?
Yes.
And member, councilmember Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
Then we are very complete. So that was for the water and wastewater. And so we study, look, we exercise one more time for the electric rate, because it's going to see that same two-point-eight percent increase, which we just talked about. So it's just a two-step process. So if you just get that, we'll go to the evidence.
Okay, for, uh, two-pointing cost of living for, I think, like, big. I'll send it. Call for the vote.
Member, councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Member, councilmember McCorkle?
Yeah.
Member Vice Mayor Barrett?
Yeah.
Member Mayor Jernigan?
Yes.
Member, councilmember Poe?
Yes.
Member, councilmember Belt?
Yes.
And member, councilmember Longbreak? Thank you.
During the joint MPUA council meeting and repeating the council meeting, roll call was previously taken. Public comments pertaining to the council items at three-minute times and a third person has been established. Council con consent calendar, all matters listed on the consent calendar are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion in the form listed. The mayor and any member of the city council may pull an item from the consent calendar for discussion. Prior to council action, a member of the public may address the city council on matters scheduled on the consent calendar. A three-minute time limit per person applies. Recommended action, approve items eleven through twenty-five on the consent calendar by affirmative roll call vote. You are. Now, if I could hold on a second. Okay. Before we say. City manager, that's a seventeen and twenty-four.
Yes, Madam Mayor. So again, uh, earlier we talked about the golf, uh, golf course rates and the improvements that were made. Here, what we're doing is basically accepting the change order that occurred when you have the fifteen thousand dollars for full contract about seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars for the work that is completed by suburb engineering. So the golf course got this transformation, uh, as a result of the grant that could be received. And we're so thankful for the efforts of our grant, I risked and team, uh, to be able to go ahead and, uh, even go make these improvements. So what you have in front of you today is a, the decrease of twenty thousand dollars for the change order that's safe and plates that the golf course. In time, we have decreasing the change order that's something going to celebrate, uh, obviously, that great Scott, uh, that helps with the project management team here to get us across the finish line. Our recommended action was to accept the change order number one of about fifteen thousand eight-hundred-and-fourteen dollars for the total contract of around seven-hundred-and-twenty-seven thousand dollars for the work completed by suburb engineering, golf course. Your creation of mission project fees behind the water and stuff that takes. Okay, so the city, uh, uh, had a lease with the, uh, law club. Uh, at that point, it's like a lease that terminated, uh, July first of this year. Uh, at the point where the city did not have, does not have the available funding, because I talked about earlier, any available funds to, 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 early, uh, that's. Anyway, so any, any available funding that we have to be able to expand city hall would be, uh, not existing at this point in time. So what we're doing is, uh, we worked with the law club, withdraw the lease that would extend it pretty, there was the sixty-day, uh, opt-out clause, uh, which would, uh, require them to date the, the sixty days if city provide those. But at the end of the day, it'd be a shame to lose the service, uh, being provided to our community for a city hall that's in this area that we just said they could, because I just broke out the plan that we could be able to perform. So our recommended action was to move forward with approval this one-year lease. That's how that would commence, September tenth, twenty twenty-five, September, uh, with terminating September tenth, twenty twenty-five. And, uh, that's our recommended action.
Any other questions by council? If not, we'll call for the vote. Call for the vote.
I'll make a motion to approve items, uh, eleven through twenty-five, and I'll submit.
Call for the vote.
Councilmember Campbell?
Yes.
Councilmember McCorkle?
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Barrett?
Yeah.
Councilmember Poe?
Yes.
Councilmember Belt?
Yes.
And councilmember Longbreak?
Yes.
Thank you.
End of the council consent calendar. City manager, three-four.
All right, we're looking to gather what's fun, so here you have to mix them in a little bit, but I, I, so we've got a lot of good things to be, to celebrate. So first I want to highlight something that was on the, uh, consent calendar. And phase four B will commence with the, uh, award of bid for the Phillips Excavation, uh, of the water service, uh, ladder replacement projects. And so basically, we're so excited to be, this is a day, well, uh, we're so excited to be able to start the water line projects. But that means it's next to fill the streets. Not only that, next week, we will have a ribbon cutting to begin phase four A of the payment management planning program. Again, it's an additional million dollars of putting towards, uh, the streets for this next, uh, year coming up. Like, you can, you can hear that there's a theme going off. There's, we're trying to rehabilitate our streets. And so what you have in front of you right there are three maps. One is the four-B map that shows the, the streets that are going to be repeated for the four-B, which is Kline, Hardy Way, uh, Hardy Place, uh, Hardy Circle, East Street, East Street Press, giving the soil. Uh, and again, towards the, phase four A and four B, there will be a present cutting. They was scheduled for next Sunday, but unfortunately, their equipment won't arrive at the time. So we're looking at next Thursdays and nightclubs. So I will reach out to all the council and make sure that there's no building on that date. But at the end of the day, since twenty-twenty, the city has invested eight-point-five billion dollars into our water line and load permits near two million dollars in any week for revitalizing our roads. That's seventeen-point-sixty miles of four-to-four-five miles of water to be treated. So covering nearly six, uh, thirty-nine percent of the city road network. And so we're just so proud. I know it's a slow process, but we're working diligently to ensure that we're taking any available penny, including grant dollars to get us across the border. With that, I'd like to also thank the Sheriff's Department for the labor day enforcement, very successful. They were able to, uh, patrol all the way down to Nevada, from top of Nevada all the way down to Arizona. Uh, numerous enforcement stops, numerous citations, decent kicking our, our water lease, so I appreciate your efforts, gentlemen. On September sixth, twenty twenty-four, staff that, that MS facilities, the owners of eleven-oh-five Blue Hill Drive, you currently heard about that, the last council meeting, again, we like to be proactive, we reach out to these folks. It was, uh, they're aware of the owners that are residing from their facility. They want to be proactive, and they're, what they're going to do is basically within the next month or the half, they're going to hire an engineer to be able to conduct a comprehensive study to identify what the root cause of the owners are. Again, that's it. I mean, everybody knows eleven-oh-five Blue Hill Drive. So as you drive along, we're here, it's that building out there on the hills. We wanted to do whatever we can, uh, to ensure that odor is not clean everywhere. So they're taking both, uh, responsibility of this and we're going to work with them and keep them, uh, responsible for the owners of the RRT. So they're going to get an engineer assessment that will self-plan and implement, uh, the appropriate improvements as necessary. Most I got that play, I'll bring it back to the council, go on, for, again, um, just got to make sure the owners aren't. All right, city received a letter from DLR, uh, the Bureau of Reclamation notifying tier-one shortage conditions for the lower tarare repeat that are taking place. I want to report to you that Arizona is reaching eighteen percent hit, Nevada is reaching seven percent hit, Needles, California are taking those investments. So let's be, that is benefit, I live, by living in the city of Needles, I know that, uh, we talk the whole time about the competitive advantage that we don't have. Water is a huge competitive advantage that we all have, city needs good. Water, you cannot buy, you cannot take orders. A limited resource, and Needles has it, so does the state Capitol, so are so big. In May, the city of Needles broke ground over eight-point-nine billion, well, number eleven, water treatment fact. So important because at the point in time where our wells are deep, uh, to be contaminated with laggies, we had to bring it off light, which brought us down to one as well. We were able to part our transport, maybe see anyone to go get a, a grant from the state to be able to rehabilitate our whole wells. So we got three wells that are even service for the residents of our community, again. Uh, another, which has the damage of the city of Needles, that we got a great team that not only jokes and gets grants, but gets it built. We're so thankful to have us in your place. Uh, the city of Needles Chamber of Commerce probably hosts a state of the city on October third, twenty twenty-four, from six p.m. to eight p.m. Here in the, the sort of, ours is come on down, uh, get a, uh, be able to get a update on what's, uh, what's state-based city. A whole other things that I'll list there. Uh, Sabrina County Sugar Markets holding their annual Fit Down, the trunker tree up at the, uh, rec center on October thirtieth, twenty twenty-four, four p.m. to six p.m. It's a safe environment, it's a lot of fun, we get some other rabbit, we go out, we try out where they go, uh, because it's got enough managed group of people up there watching them, children. Uh, city of Needles was reportedly spotlighted on the Weather Channel, which is America's more than four for being one of the highest, uh, uh, smirking in town. So that all stems from this LA Times article, so this is the hottest paper in town. So, and that is a doubt, we're the hottest economy in town. You're going to hear me say that over and over again, but basically, this is for the council all the time. So basically, at the end of the day, people are hot, folks, it's no secret, hundred-and-three percent use over, uh, uh, month of July. It's an unfortunate, um, scenario, but everybody's got three months of heat, that for three months of weather that you could go on a deal with, I'd rather be popular. Festives. Uh, Governor Newsom declared us a clean California city, uh, that came along with the two-point-four-million-dollar grant to revitalize the first beach at just a place. Governor gone down the first beach, go take a look at it, go enjoy it. Take your, take your, save your family, it's a lot of fun, you can build your own tennis command, folks, go have fun. And with that, I believe that includes my, oh, I'll have a winner again, that's one more thing I've published. So they are working diligently to implement, I'll have a winner, beautiful programs in the city of Needles. We had a state meeting, we have a meeting a couple weeks ago, here's some supporting, which is, uh, from now on, we're just going to tell people we're having off-hire and on-the-road people meetings. Oh, they're just going to show us. Because we'll be like, go and talk about rates. Like, there was, there was a free attending meeting after that, we had the Bureau land entry, uh, the Needles office, the next step is we got a meeting at the Havisup office, believe it or not. Everything on this side of the freeway is Havisup, and everything on that side of the freeway is Needles. Then we got the, the Needles. So that concludes my report. You know, I'm going to want to be, thank you so much for your time, I appreciate it.
Councilmember Campbell?
Thank you, um, yeah, needles is very much. Uh, I spent the weekend in the city, oh my God, the humidity was unbelievable, and let us all keep all those people prepared. I had four friends, only we speak after, it was during, one of them after the island area, Los Angeles, um, and then the national cars were fired. John, the fire down on Redwood, it's going to burn these trees, and by a fire control, like air fighting, so people who are low, so, so, just moving down there. We have, you won't worry about it, it's scary, you could actually see those frames finding pills. Uh, so, um, and we are still in fire scene, we're in fire danger too. So we're thanks to our community and all of your home services, we have an academy, like, was here on the, it's only tragic on Upper Freeway. It's, it's, I still have a bank with walls, so, go for it, I'm not getting out the walls, bathrooms. Uh, but water, um, mentioned the water, uh, our city, our city is unbelievably stellar, it was very hot. We just, we don't use our water a lot, we have a lot of it that we don't, we don't match it, we don't exceed it, we don't reach it. So we are exceeding, um, the expectations of conservation. So that's the main difficulty of our community. And, uh, things I'd like to remind people for that, for that is that we have a rebate program in the city by, um, water conserving toilets, you get a hundred-dollar rebate cap. We still have, we still have, you know, showers.
Yes.
We still, you want a water conserving shower at your house? You can come down and get one for free from the state board. And all these things deserve water. If you want to remove some of your turf, and I'm how much you're doing, I'm working on it, we'll remove very badly, like, a long, long, long. You take out turf, the city will pay for that, we'll monitor that first, make sure the garden, the bed, the complex. And, uh, and new water, early water, they, not new plants will not only thank you for it, will be wasting water by, by evaporating. And as Paula said, uh, basic usage is up due to water extreme heat, and we do have some more heat coming up. But I want to just remind everyone that we do not have peak towers here. In the city, there's peak gobbles. You don't wash your clothes during the day, you don't charge your phone during the day, you want to slug everything during the day, because you tell them you're paying forty-five cents to kill all. You're out of, you are losing your little days, you're losing your towers. So we don't have that, we don't have to have, so we're very blessed to have that. Uh, there's a trash can on the wagon wheel, I'm not the wagon, the way you build, the wagon by the wheels above, that was sideways, it's fully flowing. So it was a really nice one, we used to have out in town, broccoli, some of the foster man brownsons, up and down three years ago, we've got trees on that street too. But we might do that, we've got trees up, but the old trash can is open going, and I want to also keep, uh, the trash down, uh, on the beach. It's that with doggy, that little dog, it's always open, not the boss, it's not the trash. I guess I should be saying, uh, and not leaving it down there, but that's what we need to have. Um, for our community, um, um, there was information, Women's Club got a very successful luncheon today. So I want to thank the community and everyone that participated in buying lunch with the Women's Club, because they were able to make six-hundred-and-seventy-five dollars today, which is huge for us people ladies who are, it's hot. We, we're not, you know, having government sales, you know, we don't keep that in that money. So we're doing this every month, next month on Tari, we're doing talks again. So this year, we'll have it on Facebook, we'll have posters on city hall, places where you can just add it and pay in advance and get it done. Ten dollars, make sure you're on time, everyone rated about our lunch today. From the, uh, they left, so, Emma, um, Emma, she wanted her bandits, also, after the best of all, she wanted bandits, so I guess where you, um, we ate there. And November sixth, we have a golf tournament, sign for the Women's Club. So if anyone golfs, you know, if you don't golf, it's a fundraiser for the Women's Club. Here we were dark, dark for so long, we had been made, and we kept, we were starting as far as three, this whole thing, so you have, figure out how to do fundraisers, matches. But we're charged with the base money, we think, the Women's Club bases money for scholarships and for sports events, for the teams that are seeing from us and should be scholarships. We send the people out to the, to membership camps, and we put our money back into it. So, and we're very proud of them. So and we're grateful that we're being some steps to help to make support to the Needles with this stuff. I'm also here for the home, I'm sure this is, we have going, not the unity, even like, not the sentiment. We're very grateful to us, for it's all. Put that food, fly in for the Women's Club and thank everyone. And I will, I'll, I'll, I'll see you next month, that'll be the rest. That is fair. I'll be here, but I'll be.
Councilmember Campbell? Councilmember Vice Mayor? Councilmember Longbreak? I just have two things. One, there's a DMB schedule open up, is the primary?
It's upcoming, yeah.
Exciting. And then the sidewalk, the Women's Club still, we can get that, if somebody trips and sees us. Thank you, that's it. Councilmember Belt?
Yes, tomorrow being September 11th, 23 years after nine eleven, more than three thousand women and children killed on the terrorist attack. We are having, it is national day of service, so we will be doing hands-only CPR as our service to the community. Eight years CPR, so we go down, down the Needles. Needles will be there, we have some of our officers helping us out, we have, and millions. So that would be, we're willing to get, need to help out, we're going to get, get a speech, hands-on CPR. Thursday, State of the College event, September 12th, for the Calverties. And I wanted to bring up one of the things on the consent agenda is the contract act of interest that's real imperative. So sometimes we don't, we kind of fly through those consent calendar to get us out of here. But there's a lot of the things that we're doing, and a lot of the time we get, really, there's things where Donna asked, that's one of them that would be finished here shortly, so I'll be in there, hopefully, to get that, to have a grounded think for that. And.
Councilmember Longbreak?
Yeah, I just wanted to piggyback on West Care. West Care sponsoring recovery in the park this Saturday, the fourteenth, the eleventh, the one being at River View, Vermont, and Road Green Park. And that's 2315, by the way. This people in recovery, it's National Recovery Month this month, so it'll be good to show up to that. And also, I want to point out that we have a house that was burnt down through that big fire in our city. And it's basically a recycling yard. I don't think it's legal, but it's a recycling yard. And I know we've been here, we've here come a year to clean it up. But the gentleman keeps bringing things back there every day. He keeps bringing stuff back, bringing it in, burnt down house, put it in, next slide, you have, I think, that was, that's all.
Tomorrow is in memory of nine eleven, and the OX Lodge, the OX Lodge is going to have a ceremony one o'clock from the side of the main room, you're all invited. But thank you, and meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.